We are meeting tonight. If you please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'm about to introduce the congregation and our religiously in place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow and give the prayer. Our heavenly Father, we're humbled by your presence, Lord. We ask for direction. We ask for assistance in decision-making. We ask for guidance. We ask for clarity. Lord, we ask that you'll be with this council tonight. Give them the wisdom, the courage, the knowledge, and the strength, Lord, to make the decisions that need to be made, not only in the best interest of the town or the state, Lord, but first of all, in your eyes. Lord, we ask that you'll be with this group here tonight, that you'll give us all a safe trip from our meeting tonight and as they travel back to our loved ones and our homes. Lord, we ask that you'll bless this meeting in your son's name and pray. Amen.
As we, each, it seems like every council meeting, we always honor the same one, and a lot of times it's the students of our schools. Today, we're honoring, we're recognizing some wrestling state winners and looking at some of the certificates here. They're pretty impressive. And I think Dick, you got, you got a good team coming along and putting pressure on you. At this time, Dick and Young are wrestling coach, and I think Joey Stillner also is a club wrestler. Come give us a brief synopsis, then we'll honor these kids.
This year, we, we had a really good turnout this year. We tried to start something we have never, well, we've never really had before, and that was a middle school team. It led to a lot of long evenings with, after going from middle school to youth. I mean, it looked for a lot of long days, but I think it made our program a lot better. We took around seven, seven kids to the, to the Tasswell Youth State Tournament, and I think we had three place. One of them couldn't be here, he's at Disney World tonight. We had a, we had a really good showing at state. We've had a, we had a really good showing all year, actually. We had a lot of kids do a lot of good things. We had kids in the, at the very top of the Tennessee Top 100 tour. We had kids, probably more kids than I can count, that won the Southwest Virginia Youth League. We had more, probably more kids than I can count. I, I wouldn't even venture a guess how many tournaments we, our kids won this year. And the two that are here tonight, and they, they probably won the most, but they, I'm really proud of the effort they put forth at state, both of them.
How many kids you have?
Oh, gosh. Eighth grade down, we probably looking upwards of 50 kids or more now, which, you know, just a few years ago, we were at four. So, you know, we're probably looking upwards of 50 kids. Well, those aren't as, you know, aren't terribly consistent, but they're getting there, and, you know, it's all about having some, having some base for when they get to high school, when they can start performing at the HSL meeting.
And I'm the varsity coach. We, I took over about five years ago with the varsity program. We had four kids the first year, five kids the second year, six kids the third year. This year, we had, we ended up with 12 that stuck the year out. Field 10 of the 14 weight classes. And we took three guys to the state tournament. And it's a, when you get in varsity, it's a process. You have to earn your way from level to level. We end up taking three, two of them are here tonight. And then we had Derek, who's a three-time state place winner, and he will be the first, in my knowledge, the first guy in Tasswell history to sign to go to college to wrestle in the morning at 10 o'clock. So, we're pretty excited about him. You know, as a coach and as a dad, he's my son, too. We, they work really hard, and it's a year-round process. We try to do, you know, work year-round. Joey's been huge, he's, he's the best hire I've ever made. He's done a great job from four years old all the way up into high school. He'll come in the high school room with us, too. Thank him in front of everybody, he's done a great job for us.
Jesse McGraw, on behalf of Town Tasswell, in recognition for your outstanding achievements in placing first place at the United States Marine Corps Virginia Western, WA State Wrestling Tournament. Jesse, come forward.
So, I'm pretty sure he is the only state champion Tasswell's ever had in wrestling.
Okay, you have Reed Stillner, on behalf of Town Tasswell, in recognition for your outstanding achievements in placing second at the United States Marine Corps WA, WA State Wrestling Tournament. You have Hunter O'Quinn, on behalf of Town Tasswell, in recognition for your outstanding achievements and qualified to compete at the 2A BHL State Wrestling Tournament.
Hunter just graduated into University of Virginia. I think it's wild.
Derek Gunn, on behalf of Town Tasswell, in recognition for your outstanding achievement in placing third at the 2A BHL State Wrestling Tournament. Derek? You said he's going to play for college?
Yes, he got an athletic scholarship to wrestle and possibly play football on the side.
Congratulations. Getting the kids involved in any sport or any activity is very important. Best day of the time. Next is the, the, I don't know. A choice, our present request for a wrestling camp, so.
Thank you, Mayor. We, again, you know, we heard sort of the way we're growing and the amount of kids we're growing into, you know, between probably 50 or so from middle school down to the, like you said, age four. We may even have a three-year-old this year. But we, you know, to make it grow, we're gonna have to grow as a program as well. We have increased costs and things of that nature. We have some, two very, very big camps coming up. One is gonna be a guy named Mason Bettman. There's a three-time NCAA Division One All-American that's gonna come down and do a camp for us. And we also have three current Virginia Tech wrestlers who are coming down to do another camp for us. And we're anticipating kids coming in from Richlands, Wise, Marion, Royal Retreat, just all over Southwest Virginia, kids are gonna come to this camp. There are costs with the camp, and we would ask that the council donate, you know, whatever you, who you can towards providing some scholarships, because, you know, it's impossible to grow without the, it's impossible to grow without offering some scholarship type matters for the camp. We just can't do it. And so many kids can't afford the opportunities that are out there. So, we would ask for a donation for whatever the council can allow. I would also ask, we're, we have a wrestling room at the high school, a very nice room. We're, we may be pushing space on that for the, for our camps, and I would ask the council to consider waiving the fee to use the whole junior high for those three days, if, if at all possible.
For the camp?
Just for the camp.
For the camp?
For the camp, yes. April 21st, May 5th and 6th. I would ask that if the council would consider waiving the fees for, for those two days. We are 501(c)(3) and all of it.
I think we just direct Todd to do that, I don't think we need to.
Okay.
I mean, what's the, how many participants you anticipate at the camps, Joey?
We, we're sort of teaming with some people around Southwest Virginia, and the first one was in Wise, and there was 46 kids.
What's, what's one of these camps cost a kid? What do y'all charge, I know you're asking for scholarships.
Dick, the Mason Bettman camp, it's a one-day camp, and it's around $20 to $25 per kid. The other camp is a two-day camp, and it's around $75 per kid. And, you know, we don't make anything off of it. It's pretty much goes back to the instructors, their time, and their overhead. One of the guys is gonna stay overnight. He's gonna stay back at the newly renovated old jail. So, we do have some costs with that. And, you know, we don't make anything off of it. The club doesn't make anything. We're just trying to provide assistance to some of our own kids.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mullin, do you want to make a motion?
We'll sort out a motion.
Okay.
What is that, Mayor?
I make a motion that, based on our guidelines, we can, we can donate up to $400. And I say we take the max and donate $400 for their camp to offset scholarships for the kids to wrestle.
I'll pass it then.
Motion is second. Any other discussion?
I was gonna go 500.
Okay. Based on our guidelines.
Kind of motion, any other discussion? Not, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to waive the fees?
Uh, I think I just heard what you were saying. Yeah, I would do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Next is the Oktoberfest discussion.
Thank you all for allowing us to come and speak a few about the Oktoberfest. You, we chambered out a letter with some concerns about, and some questions about some things about the festival, and we dropped off a packet for you to look at with all of our guidelines, with regarding responsible drinking and lots of our policies and procedures, and some information about the festival. What questions do you have? I guess is how we need to lead into this with regard to, did we answer all of your questions that you had regarding that? Have you had a chance to look over the material?
Yes, and I appreciate it. And I'll tell you what, I think some of the main things we were looking for was to know that where the money's going to. So, the actual revenue collected, and when that revenue's collected, what it goes to, and I think your accounting is great, and I appreciate you bringing this back to us. It allows us to be able to continue to do things like this in goodwill with our community and our tax base, so I appreciate that very much. And then with regards to the, I noticed that you, we talked privately before you started. If you could just tell about the ABC and how the ABC's gonna work this year with regards to training people, dispensing like, or, excuse me, beer or wine.
Right, we, I talked with John Gunner, and the ABC does not have an official training for festivals, but he is going to develop guidelines to, this is just a new thing that he's doing for us, and hopefully it will be for other festivals throughout the state once he gets these, these guidelines developed. But we take this very seriously, the safety and security of our, of our participants, and also the safety and security of our community. So, we do everything that we see possible to, to help to enhance making it a safe event. And if you'll notice that all of the drinks will be dispensed by volunteers who have been trained by the ABC agent. No drinks will be served by anyone other than those who have been trained. And that's something we have not worked with in the past, but we felt like it was necessary in order to make sure we keep control of the things and make sure everything works well.
I think the other thing that was brought up last, I believe it was last month, was the division between the regular breweries and the homebrew people. And the homebrew wasn't being, and I noticed we addressed that as well. So, thank you for that.
Yes, we have. If, if, you know, when we see things that need to be worked with and tweaked and a different policy developed, we try very hard to make sure that we do that, because we do realize the legal, the liability exposure that we all have here, and we wanna make sure that we are very responsible with how we manage that.
That's real good.
Thank you. If you don't sign it, I'd like to read to you one thing that I said in this presentation that I'd like for everybody to hear, that the Tasswell Area Chamber of Commerce sponsors the Oktoberfest, and this event was developed to boost the local economy, to encourage entrepreneurs and innovation, to promote the arts, hospitality, and tourism, and to support events that cultivate a vibrant, energized community. And I feel like this event does promote a vibrant and energized community. We have a very good representation on Main Street that evening of people from our area, and they're not all just there to sample beer. They're there to enjoy the evening, and I think they did that. And we sincerely appreciate your support in allowing us to be able to have this event.
Thank you very much, and I'm excited for the next one.
Yeah, this is, this is covered.
Very good, thank you. Did you have any questions?
That's great.
Thank you. We do have one other question and one other presentation we'd like to make.
Good evening, I'm Beth Clemens, President of Tasswell Area Chamber of Commerce. And I guess the part of the letter that we received from the town and council that I want to talk about is the amount of money that we've asked to pay to close the street down and the additional fees per hour that, you know, that the street is closed down. You have before you also a copy of the chamber's income from the events that we have each year. Our largest event, of course, being the Oktoberfest. Second is Haunted House, and third is our evening meeting. The Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit. We depend solely on our membership dues, but mostly what we are able to bring in from our events. As you can clearly see, we cannot force pay the town. What we end up doing approximately $1,500 to hold our Oktoberfest event on Main Street. What the Town of Tasswell gains from the largest attended event in the town is far greater than $1,500. We expect the event to continue to grow, and therefore also will revenue for the Town of Tasswell. May I please remind you that the Town, that the Tasswell Area Chamber of Commerce is all about promoting the Town of Tasswell and economic development. Also, the chamber that takes care of most all the ribbon coatings for new businesses in our town, and especially in the past two to three years that the mayor and many others talk about, we do that with no charge, and there's a lot that goes into putting that together. Let me add this. Last year before, during, and after the Oktoberfest event, the one word I kept hearing more than any other, it wasn't music, it wasn't beer, and it wasn't wine. It was the word "home." Can't wait to come home. Feels good to be home. Looking forward to coming back home. Of the approximately 3,000-plus people that attended Oktoberfest, over 2,000 of those were non-beer and wine tasters. So, the rest were here to support the town and those that live here and those that used to live here. I hope that we're able to continue to have this event and what has now become the reason for many to come back home. Thank you.
That's very generous, but I know a lot of people that's come back into town, and they're saying the town's growing, and Todd's done a good job in what he's doing.
Yes.
And I think y'all do a good job, and I'll tell you this.
Anybody have any thoughts, sir?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the hotel update. This is not Jamie Oliver, this is again Francis.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. Jamie wanted me to first apologize, and he's unable to attend because of a family emergency. But we are excited about this project, and I know that there's probably some frustration because you guys don't see the work we're doing already. We, before I get into a list of the to-do items that we've been working on and we have coming up, we fully intend to start the parking garage in the fall, this fall, 2018. We have a number of things we need to accomplish, and one is to lock down funding, but we fully expect that that will happen sooner rather than later, and the minute that it does happen, we're, we're gonna be able to start that garage. And that garage hinges on the Ozon project, you know, it has to be there first. Currently, we're working with the town on some tourism grant applications for that garage, and that's in the, we're in the process of doing those things and getting through that. Within the next few weeks, we're gonna start working on the franchise application. I have started pulling down some information on how we're going to change the model of their hotel to fit the town. We do that with every project. This one's a little different, because we don't wanna put an ultra-modern hotel in the middle of downtown, we wanna match what we've got. And that's gonna require some changes, and they're very flexible, those types of things. So, we're gonna start working on franchise applications, the base construction contract, and the facility management draft contract. So, we'll be in communication with the IDA and the town on all of those items as they come up, and that should start within the next few weeks. We have a meeting coming up on the 18th. It's a strategic planning meeting. It's gonna be in Woodville, and, you know, you all are aware of the source of funding. We're not ready to announce that publicly, and since this is an open forum, we're not gonna talk about that, but we do need to get together and have someone from the town and the IDA come to this meeting in Woodville on the 18th and talk about the need for the support of the region's tourism industry and what Tasswell needs as far as tourism dollars, and why this, this funding is important. So, that'll be on the 18th. Jamie is gonna be in contact with Todd with the information of exactly where to go and what time. During that meeting, we're gonna start laying out some of the bones of the application for the funding and kind of go back and forth with what exactly we're looking for. The draft application has to be complete in the middle of June. That gives us two weeks to look at it before we submit in July. It goes to them in July, they meet on it in September. Once we get the go-ahead, we're gonna start moving it. So, we're ready to go with that. We have been looking at architects and engineers to do the, to do the main design work on this project. We've interviewed a few people, kind of talked to some people about what the hotel needs and the specifics of building on top of a garage. We plan to finalize that in June. And yeah, that's, that's my promise to bullets from Jamie, so that's where we are.
Wait, wait, a little shorter than that, you said.
Yeah, and he's still be talking.
We've been here to nine o'clock.
That's right.
Each time you talk about the masters.
Yeah, probably. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
You know, I think it's pretty, that's pretty exciting, and, you know, we had another individual stepped up for hotels, kind of filled, filled the ways that, so we're really excited. I know I am the town manager, I hate shooting through for different targets, but I think, I think it's really good, and that fall of 2019, this stands out. That will be nice.
And we're excited about the, about the product, and, and I love the Holiday Inn Express. You know, I'm managing one that we built in Lebanon, and it's a great product, and, and, but I'm excited about Tasswell getting something new, and that's, that's exciting to me. The avid product is very exciting. I think it's gonna be a great fit. I think the price point is a great fit. We struggled a little bit in Lebanon at certain times of the year with the price point. It has to be that much so I can pay the staff, it's, you know, and, and so the price point is a great thing. I, you know, knowing what I know now about running the Holiday Inn in an off-interstate property, you know, it's just harder to draw dollars. And I think the avid that had been available for a year ago would have been a great fit for that location as well. Love, love what we've got, and I'm happy about what we've got, but I'm excited to see what Tasswell can do with a new model. I think it'll be a very good thing.
Thank you, Leeann. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're excited for it.
Thank you, Leeann, safe travels.
All right, thank you.
At this time, we have Rick Barton, and he's gonna talk about the Appalachian Trail.
Hey, Rick, good to see you, bud. How's it going, fellas? Well, Ricky Barton, I want to let you see. We have a huge guy at George and things like that for hiking. We have a bicycle rental company over in Burke's Garden. We do both Siberic stands of the cars, and we do a lot of stuff with that sort of recreation. I bounced into Todd's office a couple of times, and personally think that, and he always smiles and says, "Yes, I love this guy." But the last time I talked to him, he would come by and get a few of his lessons on a few things that I'm working on. I've got an idea to try to build a trail, be a bike and walking trail for the YMCA over to the Lincolnshire project you guys are working on. And I picked that up working through Heart of Appalachia, mapping all public use trail systems that are existing right now, because we don't really have a really good database for the thing. And I found in town, you guys have the loop that Lincolnshire, and you have a loop around Calhoun's Creek. There's a whole lot of public use, you know, stuff to offer to put on a map that could be used for Heart of Appalachia. So, I'd like your blessing to, to work on that and get a public use walk-in bike trail from YMCA over to Lincolnshire. The second project I'm working on, I'd like to bring the Appalachian Trail in town. I know that sounds insane, and when I called the National Trail Conservancy, they said, I actually called them and told them I'd already moved it. I said, "Guys, I moved the trail in the town, and I got the waymarks on, good to go." I just, I got a map on the senior, came up, I'll, you know, find this update trail. She said, "You can't move the trail." I said, "But can you move the trail?" She said, "Yeah, we can move the trail." I said, "Let's talk about that." I was in that process, "Look, how, you know, what do we need to do to get that going on here?" So, I spoke with county, and they said, "Well, you better talk to town and see if they want a trail in their town." So, I talked to Todd, and he said, "Hey, yeah, let's see what it looks like." So, I called the ATC back, and we started a process, which is Appalachian Trail Community Designation. And that's the first step, is to get a really good understanding of the offerings of dispersed recreation, recreation in general of the town like Tasswell, that you can connect to the Appalachian Trail. Guys, there's three million people here that like this thing. I mean, sections of it. There's probably 3,000, 26 to 3,000, 3,000. There's probably 3,000, 26 to 3,000, 300 hikers to come through here. If you draw a line from Tasswell straight to the AT, it's 7.65 miles from the middle of town. That's just unbelievable. It's not that far. We don't work a lot here that I'm aware of on the Appalachian Trail. And for a town that's happening the way you guys are happening and picking up the way you guys are picking up, these trail towns are huge. Damascus runs on it. I mean, it's a really big deal. So I'd like your blessing to also approve moving that trail or building a spur trail system from the AT into town. And working with Thompson Trail Foundation on another project that would build a trail system, a multi-use trail system from Berks Garden to the breaks. And it might be that we figure out a way to incorporate both of these projects into one. So, I said, well, God, I mean, you know.
Those are all great ideas.
I got to meet Rick at the YMCA. We had a couple of months ago. By the way, that's progressing well.
I've got some stuff coming for you guys on the pump track. I don't know if you guys have ever seen a pump track, but they're really nice. It's a bicycle track that you really don't have to pump. You just stand on the pedal. Or you're not on the pedal, you just stand on the pedals and pump the bike. And momentum carries you through the track, through obstacles. It's really interesting. So maybe try and get that plugged in up to the line.
Pretty cool.
Yeah. Any question?
So you need two votes or just one?
I'll take them all.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the trail from the YMCA, the work on the trail from the YMCA to Lincolnshire.
I'll second that motion.
All right, guys. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Here none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'll make a motion to make an attempt to incorporate the AT within the town.
Second.
No motion and second. Any other discussion? Here none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See how easy it is here.
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Rick.
Hopefully, hopefully in six months or whatever, you can come back and give us an update on progress.
Yeah, I'll be back for us in a while.
And any help you need with any of that surgery.
We got the application in here. We'll get it filled out in the next couple of days. I'll let you know when it's done. We'll get your card.
And Rick, you might also share about the peak.
Okay, yeah. I'm here. I have a little time. I'll also talk about some other things I'm working on. So as I mentioned, I'm working with part of Appalachia doing a really big mapping project for the big counties. And trying to figure out exactly what kind of your public access, what trails are public access so we can get them on the map. Working with Spearhead, doing land management, doing expansion of upy trail systems, trying to get it to Richlands on the Clinch River Valley Initiative to make the Clinch River State Park on the steering committee for access points that will be going up and down the river trying to access. In Tasswell County, we're working on expansion of their dispersed recreation offering. So what they're trying to do is figure out a way to offer more hiking trails in county. Came up with an idea called the Peaks Initiative, where you would have four or five different peaks spread out throughout the county that when you came in, any of them here are hikers and from here with peak grabbing, it's a big deal everywhere else. And so you come in and grab these five peaks. You have proof of these peaks and then you would get something for them then. And it moves you around the county and hiking these trail systems. Now, these trails isn't part of connected. They're different parking lots, different trails, different destinations. One of those is actually the Peak Project in the middle of town right here. Went up last year. That's when we had a conversation with the landowners. There was just some miscommunication about what we wanted and what they wanted. And the main thing they didn't want was people wanting to spray paint the rocks anymore and, you know. And they had a real issue with alcoholics and milling the night. It was kind of crazy, you know. I was thinking, all right, I can think back. We'll just move the trail around. Yeah, he said, he was talking to the guy there. He's like, I got you dressed in that backyard in the middle of the night. I said, it's like a bug light really, you know. If it's dark, they're going to go toward you. I said, let's figure out a way to wrap them around. So on the Richlands, we're working on the Richlands River Walk System. This is a really cool thing. You know, and everybody is talking about hazard guys. Like you guys are making a happen. For recently, you got this really neat volume that started here that we really needed in central Appalachia. And I appreciate that. I mean, it's awesome. That's it.
Have you looked at the trail we're trying to work out off the back of Lincolnshire? I wonder if you could use a little bit of your expertise to look at the trail system.
You can go back in and check that out. Now, are you guys thinking of a hiking trail or are you going to multi-use biking trail?
It's both the usual.
Yeah. So it's going from the, we've got the loop around the lake.
Sure. I ride that loop.
So if you wait at the very end of the lake, if you turn left, you know, west, you know, coming out by the.
Where the bridge is.
Sand, where the salt dome is. Okay. And then ramping back around to the front side possibly.
We'd love to take a look at it anytime.
We'd love your expertise on that.
All right, guys. Thank you so much.
That's good.
Thank you.
Take care, Rick.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Back of the Dragon update. It's the water.
I'm glad y'all weren't such a good dude tonight.
We ain't giving you money.
Thanks for coming.
Just got a whole pot out of Woodville, Virginia. May you all have power play here. For more to look, you can answer the hard questions. Made a PowerPoint and then thought, really don't want to drag all that equipment out. I figured you all probably didn't have other PowerPoints. So I printed it for you. And I just want to give you a kind of update where we are, where we've been, and where we're going, where we expect to go. If you look at, I've got some 2017 numbers there. The winter of 2017, we did three shows, three international motorcycle shows. And they had 165,000 people who attended them and we gave out 100,000 pieces of information. And from that, and we ran a few ads in magazines, from that, we saw a 20% increase in motorcycle traffic across the Back of the Dragon, which brought us to last summer, 60,000 motorcycles that came across the Back of the Dragon. The way we calculate that, we used to get BDOTs to put out road account strips. They still do some, but that costs money. So, and they don't always have them available when you need them. So we bought some. And so we count them on a regular basis. We average those out by the weeks of riding season that we have, which may start this weekend. We'll see what the next few weekends are. We keep track of the weather, see what weekends are raining that we need to slash out. Whatever number we get, we divide in two because the road goes both directions. And then we lower it a little bit. We were 70-some-odd thousand.
Seventy-eight.
This year, 78,000. We lowered that down to the conservative to 60,000 motorcycles. So by the time we were through all of that formula. So this year, and all of it is about economic impact. Motorcyclists spend, when I started this job, did some research to see where the biggest bang, our buck was. Motorcyclists spend more money than any other domestic tourist. I'll give you an example. Backpackers spend up to $600 a week. That's pretty much their tops. Motorcyclists spend about $2,500 per week. If you look at 60,000 motorcycles that could spend up to $357 a day, that could be wherever they're going, 21 million, well over $21 million worth of economic impact wherever they end up every day that you put 60,000 motorcycles. Motorcyclists almost always have a higher disposable income. I've always said, motorcyclists, Harley-Davidson's, Ford's sports cars, you'll never find a poor person in one on vacation. It doesn't happen. So we're after them too. We don't quite know how to count those. We see car clubs. We know every weekend last year, we had car clubs in here. Some weekends, we had several. One weekend, we had, or one week, we had Elm River name a club from England shipped their Bentleys over and rode their Bentleys here to Tasswell. We had Raleigh North America twice, twice last year. So we're in the sports car scene also. I don't know how to count those though, rather than put somebody out there counting. That's just kind of defeats the purpose.
Can you use my kids?
Huh? You know, they're off in the summers. Tie them up so they don't get away. Y'all publish this, don't y'all? There was another council in southwest Virginia. The meeting kind of went viral on time. I don't want to beat that. And the ultimate goal is the increased lodging taxes. Ours in the county, we don't really have a whole lot around Tasswell to collect lodging for motorcyclists and your meals taxing particularly. And the county's happy to get that sales tax kicked back from the state. So this year, this winter, we did four shows. And we started in Raleigh last fall. And that show was the largest. It's 100,000 attendees, well over 100,000. They don't charge to get in. So there's a picture of it later on and you'll see the one of the people there. Cleveland, Chicago, Washington DC. I actually took Dr. Mullins with us to Chicago and he thought it was going to be fun. And good to work. We asked him after that if he wanted to go to Washington DC and it's the fastest snow like ever. Do you want to tell them kind of what's your experience here?
Well, I did jump, I've never been to Chicago for one thing. So I jumped at the opportunity when they said they were going to the Chicago show. I thought, well, that'd be fun. I never thought about going, you know, during the record-breaking snowfall in Chicago.
It was record-breaking.
They had had four days of measurable snow than they had ever had in history since 1900 or something like that.
It was annoying.
Nine, three days.
And we broke it.
And you all, you all were 73s back there.
It was quite interesting. But, you know, I've invited a lot of people to visit Tasswell through the years. It's my hometown, flew here all my life. But I've never invited as many people to visit Tasswell as I did in those two days. I mean, there were just row after row after row after row of sports car and biking enthusiasts coming through the show there. And I was staying in Back of the Dragon and come ride the Back of the Dragon and come visit us at Tasswell and come eat in our restaurants and come enjoy our recreation and come and get on our trails and come see our museums. I mean, to the point, Back of the Dragon is becoming Back of the Mountain, I'd say.
Y'all were next, I apologize.
But I would have to say, for our purposes, you all really need to know, this was sponsored by Tasswell Counturism, sponsored with the Back of the Dragon support and so forth. But this is a secret. But we were, everybody that was there, there were six of us. And all I heard was come to Tasswell. Come to Tasswell. Come to Tasswell. Are you hearing me? That's what I heard. And that's what I was saying. And that's what I heard the rest of the group saying. We're the focal point of this. And it is Tasswell Counturism that sponsored this and I'm thankful that they did. But the town Tasswell folks benefits. There is no doubt in my mind that we benefit. And we benefit big because of what the work they do. And I know it because I did part of it. I mean, we found, thankfully, worked in shifts because after standing on that concrete floor there for eight hours, you were ready to take a shift to the bedroom or lay down and go somewhere.
We lost Terry one time. I lived in somebody's shop and it was not an ideal situation. But he actually was out looking at the development, getting ideas of things that would work back here. We lost him once, got a little worried.
Well, that's okay. I might have brought some ideas home. It was an effort for Tasswell County, but folks, it was really an effort for this town, what I saw going on and the people being invited to come here.
When we bring people in, and our number one source of bringing motorcycles here is face-to-face. You'll never sell somebody with an ad or a commercial as well as you will look them in the eye. These people pay a lot of money to come into these shows, get their, the Chicago show, for example, Wisconsin, Minnesota, Indiana, Illinois, Iowa, you know, Canada, Michigan, Ohio. I mean, they were from the entire region. They were coming in to spend the night and then get in the show to look for things to do as well as the new things in the motorcycle world. But we bring them, they are anyone through there. We want them to send that direction. So they end up here because wherever they end up, they're going to stop. And that's when they get billboards out. So, you know, we, Comfort Inn sees a lot of traffic. So the town of Woodfield sees a lot of benefit also. They eat there, Woodfield sees motorcycles. I see a lot, and I'm leaving the office early morning in the summer one of the meetings, I'm seeing motorcycles just lined up at Comfort Inn. You can see them down in their film cast. You can see them at Holiday Inn. So, yeah, we're pushing them here and they're coming here. You just sit and watch any weekend really. More day of the week now. But the whole county's been a benefit. So it is, it is an effort that's sponsored all the county. If you look at the page that has this picture, the tall buildings, it's all outside. That is the show in Raleigh. Give you kind of an idea of what that is. That was over 100,000 people that came to that one. The size, and we went to that one just as a test. Took two of us and just about killed us. But the size of the show and the set space that dictates the number of people we take to work it. The Chicago show was the biggest, or supposed to be the biggest, until we were hit by snow. So we took the biggest group to hit. DC show's the smallest, so we took the smaller group to hit. So the next show is actually of the Chicago show. And that was an off period when I had a small break to catch my breath and take a picture. And there were still five or six people there. And then the next one, and I think Dr. Mullins can speak to this maybe, but there are a lot of people at these shows trying to get people to come ride their roads and come to their communities. And after my first round of doing these, I came back and wanted to have the best-looking, most professional booth display of all of them. And we're there with other states. We're there with big associations, multi-million dollar budgets. But I think that we've got the best-looking booth. And it definitely catches the eye. And it's 10 feet tall. So anyhow, that's just to show you what the setup looks like. And it's open and inviting. We try to draw them in to talk. There are several different types of people. There are some that you can just get a map in your hand There are some that you can just get a map in your hand and, and they'll take it and run. There are some who want to stand and talk and ask technical questions and Larry gets them, you know, and he hammers them. And then there are some who want, is there a place to eat? Is there a brewery? Is there a hotel? The hotel's going to be a game changer here. They don't want bed and breakfast, they don't want cabins, they want hotel or a lodge that all of them could come stay in but have their own space. All the shows together that we did this winter were, had 250,000 attendees at them, which was pretty good, it's the biggest crowd we've ever been in front of. And we gave away 110,000 pieces of information about Tassau County, mostly about Tassau. We did partner with a company in Giles called.
Gere.
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 Gere something.
Gere Motorsports.
Gere. Gere something. They're, they're in this thing, Gere Moto Tours. And I know, some, one of them said.
You can see, he hasn't listened to any.
They do dual sports, which are, which are motorcycles go on road and off-road and they are now bringing, they were here today, right?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. They were here. And they're now bringing off-road tours into Tassau also, across the Back of the Dragon and some of the national forest roads. So we did partner regionally, we partnered with Marion, we'll partner with anybody that wants to partner with us because we, we believe if our neighbor wins, eventually we're one win two. Here's what these things cost. In just the brochures, the rat cards that we gave away, the little motorcycles that we gave the kid or I think the only adults to get some, $10,000 is what those cost that we gave away. Hotels, meals, on these trips, $6,000 for all four. The fuel, we, we move a small house when we go and we use $2,000 worth of fuel to, to get our show on the road. And then actual shows themselves cost $6,000. That's $24,000 and put them in perspective, we have the largest marketing budget in the coalfield region of $21,000. So we actually spend more on marketing Back of the Dragon than we have in our marketing budget. We do it by grants, we do it by begging, stealing, borrowing, we steal a lot and it's true. That bus, y'all see the bus that we sold that from the animal shelter? They, they know it's okay.
Todd's locking his stuff up.
But anyhow, as, as Rick was saying, there's a lot going on in diversification, the ATV trails relevant requiring more attention. Richlands is putting a lot of money into the flinch and bringing access to it.
How much they?
How much money they, not as much money as you're investing.
How much you guys?
I'm getting that. And we're working with Rick to, to start first time hiking trails, so we're going to start spreading this money out, which is less on Back of the Dragon. Bluefield voted tonight to give us a bus and other ones. And we're going to turn that into one of the very first mobile visitor centers that Virginia has. We're going to take it to diggings and set it up so people come inside and we've got more than just a table of brochures on it to invite them here. They voted, they voted on that tonight and what we're wanting from you and we'll eventually ask Richlands and the other towns is we've asked Todd for 3,000 this year, but we're hoping next year to put 3,000 in your budget for, to help us with marketing costs. And Todd's leaving.
Make a motion to approve?
Got a motion, you got a second?
I have a second, oh, okay. Got it?
Okay. Any other discussion? Do you have a vote, if I may, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Get off my body here. Is there any questions?
You do have a great professional setup there, but the videotapes that they made and put on the big screen, people were just fascinated by that because basically just sort of ride the Back of the Dragon by just standing there and watching.
Yeah.
And it did as well.
We did and, and in your little things we hand you, there's a card that says get the app. If you scan it, your smartphone on the back will take you to your App Store, Google Play Store where you can download our app. And in that, first of all, Tassau has a page in it, but Back of the Dragon has a rather large section and it has a Google Earth flyover so you can kind of fly over top of the Back of the Dragon, see the boat and people to come ride it. And I've never seen another app, so it's, it's pretty cool.
You have questions?
Larry's wanting to talk.
I'd like to say one.
We held them back, y'all voted.
How do you, how do you follow this up?
They obviously hired me for my, my looks.
I want to say one thing and, and to Dr. Perry Mullins sitting here, his feet was hurting him and his leg so bad. He was right there. I mean, I, I stood back, he watched us for a little bit and you know.
Quick.
After all, it's Dr. Mullins. And he caught on quick and boy, was he in there and he was engaging people and I, and we were standing back and I was talking to one of the guys and I said, man, you know, he is really, he's really got it. And he was, he worked very hard and, and I want to say thank you to each one of you here and especially Todd too. I had an opportunity when we go to these and Dr. Mullins saw us do it, we network with other people. And I'm going to give you a little tidbit. There's a company called Ablevice Tours that do all European tours in the Alps. Well, I networked with those people and we're working with them and they're looking for an exciting road to bring people as like a training before they go to Europe. And guess where that road would be and guess what town they would be coming to?
Wyoming.
Tassau. And we're working on that to try to make that happen.
That was fun to watch because we first found these people in Cleveland and, and they were everywhere we went. And, and the first thing it seemed like Larry did as soon as he got a break was he was searching them out, finding out where they were and he worked in all three places.
And, and so it, it's exciting. One of the other things to give you a little bit of information, it was either a year or a year and a half, or two years ago, Back of the Dragon had over 700,000 vehicles come in. They stayed as far away as Knoxville, one to two on a motorcycle, one to two in a sports car and a family truckster, five to seven. When you take that amount, and I don't know what it is this past, this, this past year, but when you take that amount, that's what's exciting when I hear the talk about the hotel that's coming in here and other hotels that's going to be needed. We just scratched the surface and it's exciting and it's, and you know, hey, us at Back of the Dragon, we can't do it all and the restaurants and all of the breweries and all the other stuff that's coming here, there's going to be plenty, plenty. We don't want anybody to leave here that hasn't got to eat, had something to drink and a place to stay.
We don't want them to drive.
That's why the hook was crossed the street. And that's why I tell them.
Look, but I would personally say that it was a pleasure that Dr. Mullins went with us and enjoyed and, and we, you know, we committed.
Think we had more fun with him than he probably had with us.
And thank you all.
Thank you.
You all know AJ? Ever know AJ? We've heard AJ Robinson, she's doing marketing now, AJ Robinson.
I actually just, I see that, I was one, the Bristol W, what is it?
WCYB.
And I discussed Painted Feet today for our spirits of the clinch and I also want to let you all know that Virginia Tourism has a new marketing campaign, it's called Crush Friday. They're encouraging millennials to take off Fridays and Heart of Appalachia's spotlight for this week is Tassau County.
Don't millennials take every day out of their little thing?
They're encouraging.
It's going to take a whole lot of persuasion to get them to take Fridays off.
They're encouraging to document that they're taking off.
Back to your place.
This week, they were encouraging them to take off Fridays right back to the dragon and go to Painted Feet, so that was one of the things also. And then finally, I want to say, he has a consultant with him recently and they were highly complimentary of, of the town of Tassau about how forward-thinking you've been and, and they just really enjoyed their visit here, so I just wanted to compliment you all on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right. We'll move on to approval of the minutes of the work session and the council meeting on Washington 13th and the work session for March 17th. Two of three.
Second.
In addition to corrections. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is approval of the financial statements, the financial report.
Make a motion, accept it.
Have a second.
Second.
Any corrections or additions or questions? Here, now, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the town managers update on projects.
I don't have any this time, Mayor.
Okay. Meeting conference updates, planning commission, Councilman Murray?
Planning commission did meet last week and we talked about some boundary adjustments. Talked about a lot of things, I can't even remember them.
You have something and?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't.
Right. They were bringing the theater into the town, bringing the sewer, playing into the town limits out through there, so.
So wait on their recommendations. Next on agenda is the train day third committee. Councilman Robbins?
I just shared a picture with Todd and Rod and perhaps I think there's an extra one and with the town council members and the photo is a photo of our Golden Spike driving or groundbreaking, whatever you want to call it, that we have at the train station. I just wanted to share that because that was March 2018 and right below it, I have a picture of the Forest Train Station in Forest, Virginia, which is between Bedford and Lynchburg, which was on the Norfolk and Western Historical Facebook page the other day. And you can see if you had a picture what happened, it was torn down, it's being bulldozed. And I just hope that everybody realizes the support that this council gave so that our picture's the first picture. It could just as easily have been the second picture because in Forest, Virginia, their train station is now gone and now everybody is coming back. The Tassau Train Station served the people of this community for decades in the past. This is a council that is very progressive, we've heard that all night and I'm so thankful, but at the same time, we're not forgetting their history. And you can be progressive and honor your history simultaneously. The train station was built to serve and so it must continue to serve. And I think that in the future with this group back here, Tassau Canturism and others, that train station is going to continue to serve this community just like it did in the past. It may serve in a different way, but I'm excited to see that purpose unfold and evolve as the restoration of this train station continues. Our train station committee will be meeting again this week with our architect, in fact, we'll be meeting on Thursday evening at the Historical Society to continue discussing the restoration as it unfolds.
Okay, thank you, Terry. This is not on here, but YMCA, I just said on that board, they are actually planning on adding the archery range outside the grounds there to, to read and be able to host some archery tournaments, so we look forward to how that progresses this summer. Next on agenda is the unfinished business and the water plant replacement.
Counsel, we discussed during the work session, Mr. Chitwood, T and L represented, we talked about the water tank and the water tank replacement, it's been in the study for well over four months, I need a letter to be sent to Mr. Patel with the Health Department recognizing counsel's lesson to proceed with the water tank project. In full record, the water tank project will be replacing the tank that was taken offline and serving years ago and it's well south of the cost it would normally be to replace that tank, so I just need a recommendation for approval. I hope the council approved and proceed forward.
Your motion to that.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Here, now, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Question, Terry. Next is the planning commission recommendation.
I got a couple, a couple issues here, Mayor. I have had a, a recommendation from various individuals, from Mr. Bruce Freeman, Dale Hill, Shirley Forrester and also Jerry Crum.
Crum.
Crum, I'm sorry, Jerry Crum. But I would recommend that if you're going to discuss the individuals or any of the positions that you're doing in a professional atmosphere and recognize these individuals as professionals, however, it's totally up to you and how you want to proceed.
And we can discuss that in the next session. Okay, next on agenda is new business, a donation request for the Tassau Soul.
I think, Pac, if any of you have any questions?
What have we given in the past?
You know, we am.
I'm sorry, what?
What have we given in the past?
I don't remember them requesting in the past.
I don't think they have.
I, I, I know they're looking for a new facility and.
Trying to, they're trying to wait for Dave Neves' place.
See y'all, same trends.
They need some.
I can follow up with them if you'd like and I can follow up with them, try to get some definitive direction on what they want to do and bring back to them. I don't think they're pressed here at the time.
Okay.
Let me do that, I filed out for that short file.
Okay, next on agenda is the donation request from the Historical Corp of Washington City.
We presently give the other 65 a year, is that right, Mayor?
Yes.
I know that they had some, quite a bit of flood.
Frozen pipes.
Frozen pipes.
Flooding.
Flooding in areas of.
I think insurance covered that. I hope their insurance covered that.
I can follow up with this, too, if you'd like.
I mean, I wrote the letter, I mean, they have a short file, everybody has a short file, I certainly understand that. I just like to see like from a budgetary standpoint where we're at, what all are giving to each of these this year to make sure we don't, I mean, I'd love to give them all $10,000, good, but.
Is that in the transaction? Where they're getting it?
What's that?
Who typically puts that in your package?
I didn't do a, I didn't do a special report on it. Are we talking about council support line item?
Yeah.
It is, you have a budget of $15,000.
Okay, just let it go, don't, don't say nothing else.
Okay.
This is a request for 2019. Right, so that would be in the budget we're putting together, right?
That's correct.
We're good.
So you have to decide.
It'll, I mean, absolutely, it'll be in there for the next fiscal year, so maybe I'll.
I mean, I'd like to see, is there, is it possible for us to see like a spreadsheet of, of all of our annual contributions?
Yeah.
Just to make sure we're getting the right amounts of money.
Everybody keeps wanting more and more and more. And as the economy continues to spiral.
Yeah, it's hard to support anybody up here, but.
And our first effort should be to help people in our community like proud to be seen.
Absolutely. But you got to have it too, so I just want to make sure we have it before we give the money.
It, you will absolutely have that difference in funds in your next fiscal year.
65 to 10?
Yes. That's a 3,000 dollar difference.
Yeah, but if you do that with everybody that comes to you, all of a sudden, it's a 33% increase in the revenue. We do that with everybody, that's a 33%.
I'm just, I'm just saying that if you, if you, you know, today, six months from now, we got this letter, maybe we couldn't do it, but today, yes.
I wonder how many other towns in southwest Virginia would like to be home to the most fleet, comprehensive, regional, historic museum in this part of the state. I'm glad it's here.
Oh, me too. I just want to make sure we have the money.
I'm moving that we get, go ahead and do that at the level of funding they request and I agree, we need to see what we're giving everywhere, but I think that's a reasonable amount for that organization.
I thought 65, I don't even agree with you.
I made a motion.
You got a motion? Have a second. Have a second.
I'll second it so we can have a discussion. Because I'm not, I'm not saying that we're not going to give it, I just want to see a spreadsheet of all the money we're giving and I'm glad we're giving them and I'm sure they're at the top of the most, if not everyone on this bench is priority, because I agree with you, Dr. Mullins, as you said. I just want to see exactly how much money we have and where it's going and then absolutely make them a top priority, but do it from a, I can give away 20,000 from this bench right now, but I have no idea if we have it and if he says we have it, I'd like to know that we're making sure we're using those dollars for everyone's responsibility.
Seems like in mayors on the council, we've asked for this numerous times, so why don't we just make this an annual thing, just get us print out, see where we are and then we'll know where we're at.
Yeah. And even, and even tackle this in a works, in our annual work session.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Would you all prefer I withdraw the motion until we have a chance to see that?
I would.
I would.
So we have a chance to review it?
All right.
We'll move on to another. We'll move on to another discussion. We got a lot today. Request from the DHS, DCA, SL, SCL, violence.
There's twenty students.
There's actually three.
Three students?
Three students.
Yeah, there was twenty that had qualified, and there was three qualified in the next level.
How much did you want?
Well, they are asking for...
What's our chart say for three?
What's a chart say for three?
One ten, two hundred, fifty, two hundred dollars.
The digits is two hundred dollars?
Fifty, two hundred. Is it for students?
One...
One ten?
It's a overall donation.
Per student?
It's about four hundred for grand, or we give them twenty.
The description is fifty dollars to two hundred dollars for one of the five students.
What's the county, you know, my, can you give me that?
I don't know, I'm not sure. I have a burger here. I don't know, I know what you're getting every year, every year.
I know it's already reached with America, if you had a decade, you still want to be soliciting money for those girls.
I could put them all, you know, it's just as much as uncomfortable for me as it is for y'all, but I could put them all back on the agenda again, bring you some information, do a little more due diligence on them, and bring them up for future day of life. I'm not so much into pushing money requests in other agenda, maybe you can vote on it the same night, and I apologize for that. You'd like to bring them all back to you later today?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me. I'll bring, I'll bring them back to you.
We're right up here. You can email us that spreadsheet sometime between now and then we all get a chance to look at it.
We worth putting in the package, and we'll get back to you when we have.
I couldn't have that for you tomorrow.
Okay.
When is, when are they supposed to go to state? Isn't it like, two weeks?
Atlanta, I think. Does not have a, they went to March first, and I'm not sure when the nationals are, I'm sure it's between now and the state.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we give a hundred dollars, which is in the middle of our...
I'll second.
Okay, I motion and second. Any other discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion, Terry. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Rural Development Resolution and Code of Conduct, N three resolution. Okay, the government body of the town of Tassel, Virginia, consisting of seven members of the league, called meeting held on the tenth day of April two thousand eighteen, at which, according to President, resolve as follows. Be hereby resolved that, in order to facilitate obtaining financial assistance from the United States government, the United States Department of Agriculture, Rural Development, the government to provide funding for the purchase of police, vehicle, and equipment the government body does hereby adopt, divide, or permit, contain, and agree with documents and forms required by the government to be executed. Be further resolved that, or to be, I guess, tied, will be authorized on behalf of the town of Tassel, the above referenced and decrements and executed such other documents and tools that not limited to debt instruments and security instruments, as may be required in obtaining the said financial assistance. This resolution will offer the copy of any required documents here, is hereby entered into permanent minutes of the means of the government body of the town of Tassel. Do you have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
On paper, any discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Along with that is the Code of Conduct, no employee officer or agent of the owner, shareholder, participant, selection, award, or administration of a contract supported by rural housing service funds in a conflict of interest, will or apparently be involved. The above code, Virginia was approved at this meeting held on April the tenth, two thousand eighteen, with seven members of the government body, the president, which represents the court, a vote were held in this resolution, and the resolution was adopted by a vote of... I hear a motion to adopt this Code of Conduct.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Here now, call for a vote on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the rezoning recommendation of the planning commission.
This doesn't involve any money, so I'm sure. This is overcoming me after the last council meeting, and we was talking about what they need to do behind the theater, and looked up the zoning, and I couldn't believe what was that, and C one, no excavation, or no work at all to be done in. But I've looked back through all the maps since I've been here, and cannot find where this has been painted, so I don't have the zone, we cut on the computer.
Yeah, you'd think it had been part of the shopping center, but it didn't.
Yeah, it should be the pink, which is B two.
So the movie theater is in C one now?
Yes.
So that's ever since oversight years ago.
Might be a mistake, but we need to go through the motions, and have a public hearing, and I'll contact the local, and show them, because they're all too affected by it. They all leave, and the park is...
I'll make the motion.
Second.
The motion is second to schedule a joint public hearing, change the movie theater from C one to B two, and be on May the eighth at seven o'clock. Any other discussion?
Just that, the road there, those are houses, right?
That's stuff for the farm department. I have to also contact the rest of the village, they're behind.
You know, all in all, to be honest, that's a misculmination in the building. But I can't definitively prove it.
How come, how come the apartments are the same?
As I say, they were built before...
They couldn't make shit, because they couldn't have built them without moving dirt.
I know, but that was in the county at one time.
I say, when we went to the software and put this map on, Brandon Moore does the software to me, it was just an oversight.
Probably should have went behind the parks there following Brandon. But unfortunately, we can't, we can't prove it, and if somebody like, like Brad Hyde in the future says, well, show me where you did it at, I just...
Well, we need to do it now.
So just build it, get it open, build it.
Okay, the motion, any other discussion? Here now, call for a vote on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Terry. Next is the seventy budget public hearing approval for May the eighth, at seven fifteen. I hear a motion to have a budget hearing on that date.
I'll make the motion for the budget hearing.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here now, call for a vote on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is Miss Lance, who will include the Y-temper fest, request for the chamber.
Didn't we, didn't we already do that?
No, we have to explain the theme.
Oh, the theme?
Yes.
I'd like to discuss that in the quick portion.
We also need to go, because we only had three of one.
Well, we've reevaluated it.
Okay, you're okay.
Okay, all right.
You're okay.
Okay. We'll discuss it now or later?
All right, we can do it right now. My concern with it is that we just made this precedent, and I understand that, that this, your fundraisers or everything, and that, but we also have an overhead, right? And, and we want it to be successful, and we love what it is, but if, if, if you really look at what the breakdown is of the cost on the taxpayers in this town to put that event on, it's significant. And, well, when we met at our last work session, we came up with what we thought was a fair amount for entities to, to have an event, because, especially with alcohol, there's a significant cost to the police force, to not to mention everyone else that the town has up there, and that comes at an expense to this town, so, but we also talked about, if it's for a nonprofit, that we would discuss opportunities for that, so, you know, you set policy, the last thing you want to do is, the moment you set a policy, the first time it comes to you, you fold like a deck of cards and say, okay. You know, but I mean, I think that, that we, yeah...
If I may ask, could you make a contribution to the Chamber of Commerce to offset the fees that we're incurring?
Maybe that's something that we could discuss doing, I just feel like, you know, we set, we set the policy, and then the person would come to us and say, we can't, it's not that you can't afford it, you just don't want the overhead, well, we don't want to, we're already incurring over half of that overhead to put that on, okay? So the part that is actually going to do is less than fifty percent of what it costs the town to do, so I, I hope you understand that as well. And that all goes directly back to the taxpayers of this town, put it on. So we're trying to be fiscally responsible with that money, and I think that's something we could, could discuss doing, but...
I think, I think we have a good voting on it tonight, let us discuss it among the council.
I guess I just wanted to understand why we're like knocking off the bat saying, because it's a great problem to have, but it's also a win-win, because, yes, you brought it to the town, but I've been to festivals that weren't on locations like that, that don't do what that does with those restaurants and the brewery and all that there, so I feel like it's important that we make it a win for you, a win for the town, and a win for the taxpayer in a, in a fiscally responsible way, and not just a win for the, the chamber, and understand that what you do, we love and appreciate, but we were also a town that helped keep that alive when it was struggling drastically for years as well, so...
When, when is your merger with the chamber official?
I think about the end of June, end of June, I think, or so-called.
End of June? And then what would be the status of the chamber then? In other words, resident of the chamber, will it still be you, or will it be someone else?
It will probably be someone else.
And, so what I'm wondering is, I must say so, is the chamber going to have, for the town of Tassel, as we have it right now? I mean, we're all helping the town of Tassel, as it will be for someone running it out of Richlands.
Well, it probably won't be run out of Richlands. The, the chamber office, you know, the recommendation is that it will be in Tassel, and we will probably hire a director that would be either be the manager, so that will be, you know, when we run out of Richlands, not at all.
Well, how comes a Tassel area Chamber of Commerce sponsored this event, not Tassel?
You're getting what I'm getting at, Terry. I was curious about that.
Well, it's going to be a county-wide chamber, it just won't be called Tassel area, it'll be county-wide.
And right now, we go forward with what we have in front of us, we have non-merged...
I timed it on the same angle, she said June thirtieth is the end date, so that's why...
Well, that, that's consolidation. So, you know, we'll still have our events, we're still planning on having whatever events are in place.
I assume you're planning ahead.
It was never a plan for the towns, each town, to lose their events that they've always put on, they'll continue to do that.
Well, do you think the county-wide chamber will, will want to sponsor this in the future? Will it give us some monetary...
Yeah, I don't see any reason why they would not want to.
Huge fundraiser for it, I'm sure.
But see, when you...
It's a successful event, so there's no reason...
But when you start having it under the new chamber, then it's not just the people in Tassel, it's going to be paying for this, it, the people in Richlands are going to be benefiting for this, from this also.
Oh, the whole county will be.
That's where we're...
That, that's the reason, you know, that's the reason for the consolidation, it's so the entire county will benefit from a county-wide chamber.
So we're talking about, talking about, you know, this work session. It's more about what Todd was talking about in his work session.
Yeah.
And I did want to add too, you know, this, this event doesn't just benefit the chamber, because whatever the chamber does, it benefits the entire community, you know, it doesn't, we don't really hold all the funds, whatever we do, either in legwork, support, or whatever, it benefits the whole community, it's not just a benefit for the chamber. We feed everything back into, you know, economic development, or whatever's needed to promote our entire area. Just keep that in mind as you have that discussion, please.
Any other discussion, any questions, please? We'll let you go. We like to get a pedo group, a slow.
I guess I'll make a motion, we're going to the second, you said?
No, we're going to see a person, break in, but, but, anything else?
Add a perfect nail to those planning permissions.
Can I ask a question about the guidelines for your determination on who is charged to do is not charged for events when the street is closed? How, how, what, what is your criteria?
Is that for every entity, nonprofit, or...
I have a letter, a letter, but a hard way for me to read it, I can do a vote template to, to rephrase what Kansas' direction was, a main street movement to the town of Tassel. So, any event that's on Main Street, especially if it's for profit, is what Kansas is concentrating on. So I'm going to use some real examples of what we've already got. There's a fall fest coming up, they will have to pay the fee.
I understand, they're a private entity.
Yeah, they're a private entity, and they're capitalizing on it, and that, that, by the way, is the key reason for it, there's a lot more to it, that prompted the fees. Not that, Claudia knows where I'm going with this, so, it's not that entity, but it's a lot, a lot of reasons for that, so, the cruise ends are downed bands, they're for everybody, so, I don't know if that clarified it or not.
Well, I, I know that, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, we're, it's an office that is open every day promoting economic development, it's not just one time a year, we just have this, you know, so, I understand a private entity, I mean, you know, someone from wherever comes and say, I want to close the street, go and have a, a, a festival or an event, I understand that you would charge them, but, you know, the, the Chamber of Commerce is, and, and what we do on a very small budget, you know, is, is just far greater, I mean...
And these events are so we can keep the doors open, I mean, you can see what percentage of, of that event contributes to us being able to just stay open, and, again, I just want to, you know, make sure everyone understands that, that, you know, these events are, you know, it's not anything that we make is profit, it's a electric bill, and, you know, and, and to keep a Chamber of Commerce, a Chamber of Commerce running.
So, well, here's what I would just ask you to consider, if, if the town, rather than doing what it does for you to have this event, if they said to you, okay, you can have the street, but you're going to have to take care of the public works, and you're going to have to take care of, you follow me, because there is, there's a cost to do it, I just want to understand, there's a, there's a hard cost, so, it's not that we don't, we would, it just, there's a point where, somewhere along the line, anytime you have a fundraiser, there's a, there's a cost to a fundraiser, and, and I think that there's a, maybe there's a middle ground, but there, but you need to have a little skin in the game too, I think, personally, and I... but you need to have a little skin in the game too, I think, personally, and I, because I feel like.
But at the same time, the number of times that we have to close Main Street in a year is down. And the, the difference in what people, the workers have to do, uh, extra work, police, and park, their salaries and everything. It's costing the town a great deal of money.
Yes.
Maybe we could give, could you give them a concrete?
Yeah, let's, let's just, I would recommend, heavily recommend Kansas.
I just don't think.
Paying for the right now, and let me follow up with them, uh, in a different atmosphere, but just, let's, let's leave it.
They're so bad.
Oh, yeah. I mean, listen, these are, these are, these are great problems to have, and having to shut down Main Street is a great problem to have. Not having enough parking is a great problem to have, so there are things we can get through. I just want to make sure.
A few years ago, we just been making some nice.
Yes, yeah. But we appreciate your, uh.
Yeah, we will follow.
Yeah.
Reasonable solution.
We're not trying to hurt you, we're trying to help you.
I think that's, I think that's.
A second.
Well, we're going to give, uh, for two names consultation of the legal council personnel in the. I have a motion to that day.
We do. I make the motion.
Yes, second.
Tom, I'm proud of you. You said consultation of legal counsel. Do you have a specific?
Yeah.
I would need to add, make, there's two legal matters we need to discuss. One, in addition to what you have also to discuss.
I make the motion to go into executive session for two legal matters personnel.
Second. Okay, all papers say aye.
Aye.